All right, well, I'll at least get this started and if Bill joins us, that's great. I'll open up the December fifteenth meeting of the Hamilton Planning Board. It's a couple of minutes after seven o'clock. I am Brian Stein, the Chair. Given we are meeting over Zoom tonight, I will have all of the Planning Board members present state their names and then I will read the agenda for tonight. So, Marnie.
Marty Crouch, present.
Rick.
Rick Mitchell, present.
Corey.
Roy Bowe, you present?
Richard.
Richard Boroff, present.
Okay, and Patrick, obviously, Refred is here.
And you.
And yeah, I said that already.
Our minute taker is here.
Yep, and this is being recorded, so everyone knows. Hopefully Bill joins us soon. On our agenda tonight, we have an A and R request for Zero Bridge Street Assessor's Map fifty-eight lot fifty-three. We will be discussing her potential bylaw change, the flexible zoning bylaw that we've been discussing the last number of months. We will be also be talking about a having a discussion about a possible zoning change to the area of or the lot of that went to school is on. And other board business in minutes later on. So, Patrick, can you just bring us up to date on who's here for the A and R request, please?
Let's see, Aaron Mackey is here. I see him in the center of my screen.
Great, let's, Aaron, if you want to kick it off, that'd be great.
Sure, yeah, I can share my screen to bring up the plan. Okay, will do.
While Aaron's doing that, let me say that they have provided the Form J paperwork. They have provided us with the plan. They provided us with the cost for submission. And I have reviewed it, so I'll let Aaron go ahead.
Okay, thank you, Patrick. Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. I'm here. My name's Aaron Mackey with Allen and Major Associates. I'm also here with Robert Clark from our office and John Murphy with Summit Real Estate Strategies is also on the line. John is the applicant for this A and R request. You can see the plan we submitted is on the screen, Assessor's Map fifty-eight lot fifty-three. The property is located at Zero Bridge Street. The existing parcel is nineteen point seven four acres and we are looking to subdivide that into nine lots. We've done the research. The zone here is R one B zone, which requires a forty thousand square foot lot, lot frontage of a hundred and seventy-five feet, minimum lot within depth of a hundred feet. And that's at the building location only, but we have held that dimension throughout all of the lots. Maximum building height of thirty-five feet, the the buildings will be less than that. Number of stories, three, the buildings will be less than that. Maximum building coverage of the lot, twenty-five percent. The buildings will be less than that. Minimum front yard setback is twenty-five feet from the street line. And minimum side and rear yard is fifteen feet. So with that, you can see the lots we've divided up here. All these lots meet those requirements for the R one B zone. And that's about it. Pretty straightforward. The, we did have these wetlands in the center of the parcel flagged in early November by Goddard Consulting, a wetland scientist. They went out there and flagged. What is shown was field located by our survey crew. And accurate lot lines are shown on this plan. So with that, I'll open it up to the board if you have any questions regarding the request.
Any questions from the board?
Are there any endangered species in the wetlands area?
We did, we did a look on the Oliver Mass G I S and no endangered species were were seen on that.
And you're representing that the required one hundred and seventy-five feet frontage is present on all the lots because and I'm perhaps reading the schematic wrong, but for example, on lot seven, it looks like the the frontage is a hundred and forty-one point seven five feet. Do you see that?
Yeah, that's because there's an angle point. So it'll be the one forty-one seventy-five plus the thirty-three point twenty.
Oh, I see. Okay, thank you. That that's the clarification I needed.
Yeah.
What's the thirty-something that you're talking about? I see what she's talking about, but I don't see what you meant.
So there's a hundred and forty-one seventy-five. That's from this lot corner to the angle point in the lot line.
Okay.
And then there's a thirty-three twenty-five that goes from that angle.
Okay, I got it.
Yeah, thank you.
Okay.
Okay, so that's the same as the one that's next to it on the right.
Correct.
Hundred and twelve and sixty-two and so on. Okay, thank you.
Yep.
When a survey line has to follow a right of way or a property line that's curvilinear like this, when it's going to have those break points on edges like that.
Okay, thanks, Patrick.
And these can all have reasonable access, right?
Yeah, we studied that out. We had some email correspondence with Patrick and we actually provided him a plan that would show, you know, conceptually how a driveway and a house lot could work on the most difficult lots here.
Right.
Five. And we provided that to Patrick and, you know, we've worked through that to make sure it can be reasonably accessed.
Okay. Just out of curiosity, not really related to this, but have you have you perked all of these?
It's, we're scheduled to get out there. It was supposed to be later this week, but because of this, no, it's not going to happen later this week, but early January seventh and eighth, we're going to go start digging some test bits on the first four lots on the left and, you know, though I think the lots are plenty large enough, we'll find some areas to perk and initial law, looking at the soils, I think along Bridge Street, we'll have better luck. So if we can keep the septics close to the road, I think we'll find some better soils down there. And we can gravity feed down down towards the roads for a system.
Okay. Any other questions from the board?
I don't have any.
Somebody want to make a motion?
I have a quick question.
Sure.
How are you going to deal with the runoff? This is just, all this land is on a very steep hill.
Yeah, we're aware of that. So so there is a existing roadside swell along Bridge Street. We're going to maintain that. Any driveways will have culverts under those to keep that flow. You know, and I, and the applicant is aware of, there is some stormwater requirements if we disturb more than acre. We've been in contact with Patrick and
D W Director.
D W Director Tim and, you know, we're we're aware of the concern and, you know, we're, we've, we've thought through, you know, what we could do. And, you know, I think it would be in some kind of infiltration trench along the drip edge of the roofs and maybe the roof leaders could could feed into, you know, an infiltration trench around the building. Or maybe it's a simple as feeding the roof leaders into a dry well. But, you know, we're aware of the concern and, you know, we're planning to mitigate for that.
Okay, because you're going to put a lot of driveway in there, which there isn't now. So that's going to create a lot more runoff in the street.
Right, that's the idea behind, you know, if some infiltration trenches in in dry wells, that's that's to meet the the pre, our post flows will will meet the pre flows coming off the properties.
Okay. We'll see.
Yeah, it doesn't prevent us from, can it prevent us from approving this?
No, I'm just curious.
Okay. Somebody want to make a motion?
I move that the A and R request submitted by, excuse me, Summit Real Estate Strategies LLC be approved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any more discussion? All those in favor? We'll do this by roll call. Marty?
Marty Crouch, I.
Rick? Rick?
I'll go, Richard Boroff, I.
Okay, Rick?
Rick Mitchell, I.
Corey?
Roy Bowe, you, I.
Bill?
I will abstain.
Okay, and Brian Stein is an I. So that's five or six YAs, no, five, sorry, five YAs and one abstention.
I will have a copy of the Mylar on the Selectman's Table for your signature beginning tomorrow morning if members can take a couple of minutes and come by and sign it for the applicant.
Patrick, what are the hours of Town Hall? Because they've, now there, it's only partial days that it's open.
I believe it's eight thirty to twelve on Monday, Wednesday, Thursday and Friday. The hours are later on Tuesdays, two P M. to six thirty P M. So just come in the morning time if you would, please.
Okay, thank you. All right. Moving on, we have our discussion about our flexible zoning bylaw next. We have Patrick sent around and updated matrix that that Bill did and Rick made some edits to comments on. We've got the full text that is now that we've been talking about for a little while now. So Bill, I guess, since you're Mr. Matrix, can you just take us through this?
Well, let me address Rick's edits, which I think are fine. You can, you can convert the percentages, which is what I was talking about, to, you know, fractions of units. Rick, if you're going to do that, we have to change column G. So it's no longer, the definition is different. It's B plus D plus E plus F, where you just add your red units as opposed to multiplying. We can make that change. That that might, that might actually, I don't know, resonate more, be a little easier to understand rather than multiplying the percentages. You could sort of add half a unit and half a unit and whatever you come up with, column G.
Yeah, I multiplied each of those columns and then
Right.
By the percentages and then added.
Right, but then the definition of G has to change.
Well, that's fine.
It's, it's, it's not B times that. So I can, I can do that. You understand, just want to make sure you understand that the maximums you have in C. So under R one A, a maximum of two eighty-seven, two eighty-seven thousand dollars, that's per acre. That's not a project maximum. That's the maximum payment that a developer would make if he were going to build six, seven, five units on, you know, R one A. And, you know, and he met all the criteria and that's how many units. Now, if he was going to do a three acre development, then it would be three times, it'd be nine hundred thousand dollars. Okay, is it, I just.
Yeah, well, it would be nice if he put that in. That's a big, that's a big difference.
Well, I know that, but that's, that's the way the whole thing is always set up. The fifty dollars is per unit. Okay, per unit allowed. There's no, you were thinking, I'm, 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 I'm thinking, you were thinking that there's a project cap in some sense on how much, but no.
I took you.
The whole thing has always been per acre so that the, you know, if you wanted to do a ten acre development at that median lease crime, I mean, a ten acre would be sixty. Okay, and then he would, so two point eight seven eight million dollars. Brian, you understand that, right?
Oh, yeah, no, I get it. I mean, I, I, I think that I mean, it's just how to word it, right? I'd rather okay, I'd rather not have that max in there, right? Like, because we don't know what that max is. It's it's project dependent. It's in size dependent.
Max, where the max is a X per acre.
Per acre, yeah.
Acres or.
I don't think, I don't, I don't think it's necessary, right? It's, it's, I understood it like you did, Bill, that it's fifty thousand dollars per additional unit on top of, you know, what's based on.
What's allowed by zoning. Okay, so Rick, I just, I because I know you had a lot of project caps originally in mind and that's not what, that's not what we have here.
Well, I still, I still think that this needs a, just like we do with senior housing, a max project cap. We talked about that a couple of times. I think that we should cap each development. You know, which was a key thing in getting senior housing passed.
Does that mean you take out the max that Rick has here and put another column for?
No, it's just.
Just take it out.
You just change it to per acre.
Yeah, I mean, well, well, that, but I meant max number of units allowed per development.
You have both per acre and per development.
Yes, yes. So I would change in the parentheses from a max dollar amount and just put in parentheses per acre.
That's fine.
Yeah, again, the whole point of this.
Hold, hold on a second. The fifty thousand applies per acre to every additional unit you are putting on that acre.
Right.
So if, 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 if in the case, if in the case, okay, this row going to develop six point seven five acres, you're going to put six point seven five units on an acre in this because they all meet these criteria. Okay, then you're going to owe the town two hundred and eighty-seven thousand dollars for each acre you develop at the density of six point seven five.
Right.
Yeah, this is going to need, it's going to need some sample examples of that, how this formula plays out so that people know how this works.
I think, I mean, it's pretty clear. I, I think the, in general, the one through five, you know, you know, the footnotes are are generally fine. I think it's pretty what's going on now. But I still think that it is, is an additional footnote we need or somewhere, we need a maximum per development.
Per development.
Per maximum, just like we have in senior housing, right? We had fifty per development. Or whatever number we want, but we need something.
Right, so I will, we'll put that in, total development, total developed units are limited to fifty per project or something like that.
I mean, does everybody agree with that?
Yeah.
Yeah, I'll go along with that.
And it's, it's makes sense just to make it as the senior housing bylaw because you already have precedent. You start arguing for more than, you know.
Right, right.
Going to get it out.
Now, the other thing that that will take a little bit of rewording to, Rick, is column F. So if we go with your red things, you, you, you get between points, let's stay in that same row, between point seven five and two point seven five units.
But no, two point two five.
Two point two, two five, but you have to make it clear that that range is dependent on your devoting between twenty-five and seventy-five percent of the land set aside.
That's why I'm like, I, I think we need to just get rid of the fractional units and just keep with the percentages. That's what we have in senior housing units.
It worked. Well, I did this just so that I could understand what the impact is and I suggest.
Then, then.
I, I suggest I suggest leaving it in because when you're trying to describe this to somebody that hasn't spent three months understanding this, they won't, they won't know what this means.
But this is a bit, I, I, I understand. I'm trying to clarify this because this, this is written just like the senior bylaw, which is with the percentages. It's all, it's all the same, you know, formula.
Right.
But they don't have the unit thing in the senior bylaw.
Yeah, I did this just because, as I said, when I sent you the email about ten days ago, I said I wanted to be guinea pig as Demi the dimwit because I needed to see this in a visual format, so I know what in fact its impact would be if each of these criteria were included in a proposed development. So, and I think this is critical when we're trying to sell this document to understand it. Maybe we use this as an example. And you can eliminate out in the final version, eliminate the per unit, you know, point seven five per head or point seven five to two point two five units. But for explanation, and at least my understanding, I needed to do this so I could see what the heck was coming out of this. What was the product of this matrix?
Okay, so then maybe what we need is two more footnotes with two examples. Some rain, you know, giving, because column G is set up in units, even though columns D, E and F are in percentages, just so that people can see what the range is. And then we have a footnote there that says something like
Just putting.
For meeting this criteria in this zoning, you get, you know, yea many units.
Right.
And, and column G should also indicate that that's per acre.
Yeah, that's right.
Yes. Maximum allowed density per developed acre.
But I think, I think you're right, Bill. Like, we need a couple of examples on a couple of different zones. Doesn't have to be one for everyone, but maybe there's, you know, one example that has, you know, it does D and E or something, or we can pick what it is, but one's a lower number, one's a more, one's a higher number.
Two, two, one meeting all the criteria in this zone, one meeting just this criteria in some other zone, right?
And then, yeah, and then tally up the fee that you get at the end, right? And also, you know, the density.
So do three examples, R one A, one B and R A. And just.
You've clarified me on the building permits, effects, the fact that we went to the min and max. Okay, let me take another iteration on this.
One question on column F. In order to qualify for the flexible development bylaw, you have to already set aside forty percent?
No, no, that's, that, that was in Rick's version. In this version, no, you can set aside nothing. And you get the base under the flexible density bylaw.
So when we get to the full language of the bylaw, we might need to amend that line.
Right.
I just was reading through today and I was like.
The actual language of the flexible bylaw now has to be changed.
Right.
Does provide for forty percent. And I don't know if you all had an opportunity to review it, but I also left out the base density as well. I, I just left a blank space because we hadn't determined that. And the cap of fifty units would have to be plugged into the language. It's not going to appear in the matrix.
We'll put it in as a footnote.
Yeah, give me it as a footnote or.
It could be as a footnote, but I think it's also, it's wise to put it as part of the body of the, I, I think in the senior bylaw, it's, it's part of the actual language. There's a separate, separate paragraph that says there's a cap. I think it's, it's important to have it. It's more important to have it in the body of the text as opposed to a footnote. It, it, you know, if we're serious about it, it needs to stand out. And that's no problem. I mean, I have, I don't know if anybody really read that, but I think that it's easy enough to make those edits.
Okay, I, I mean, I, I need to, because I didn't, I was out most of the day. I didn't get your revised text, Marty, until the end of the day, so.
Actually, I, it had been sent around earlier, but it still needs further revision. So along those same lines, though, and consistent with the flex, I mean, the senior housing bylaw, do we want to have some type of a, a distance requirement between developments?
Yep.
Should it be the same as the senior housing bylaw?
Yep. You have in the language twenty five feet still, right?
What did we say about senior?
Are you talking about distance between?
Distance between developments, yeah, distance.
Yeah.
Oh, developments.
Between developments, yeah. No, I think, yeah, I think that.
Do a hundred units by doing fifty units that are right next to each other.
Right, right.
I didn't, what's the distance in the senior by law?
Third of a mile, I think.
Okay.
Did you say third of a mile?
I think, yeah, I think that's what it is.
Okay.
That's, that's, I like the idea of being consistent between these two, so we can tell people, look, we had this bylaw and it was just limited to senior housing. So now what we've done is we've, you know, done the same kind of thing without the restriction of seniorship.
So the one thing that it sticks out for me is R one B and R A are dramatically lower than the business district and R one A.
Well, I, first of all, the business district, I don't know what to do with this row because development allowed in the business district by right.
Say that again, Bill, please.
There's no, Patrick, right? Residential development is not allowed in the business district by right?
You?
It says, you side plan review.
Yeah, you can do single family in the business district.
What's the density? I, I just couldn't find it anywhere in the, in the existing zoning matrix.
I think they've always done it. What do they always do? I forget, I forget how it reads. But it is, it is allowed. And I want to, I want to say it's like the density of R one A, but I could be wrong about that.
Patrick, can you, can you decipher this and just send me a note? Whatever it is, I'm going to put it in and then make that row, you know, adjust. But I, I couldn't quite figure out what the.
Well, well, in reality, is there even any space in the business district to do residential housing?
Well, there might be, sure. I mean, it's one of these.
The meeting goes.
Yeah, one of the garages goes belly up or something, then there's a ton of vacant land.
Well, or, or we remove it from this bylaw and we rely on, you know, the multi-use bylaw that you know, Willow Street used for multifamily and commercial. Like, as we've always said, or well, a number of our boards have always said that we wanted to keep commercial in the district, right? So maybe we don't allow this in the business district.
I agree. Take it out.
This flexible thing is just for R one A, B and R A.
For the residential zones, yeah.
Okay.
Again, not that there's all that many people.
I mean, I'm, 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 I'm it's in the, is, is, I, I think, is the business district actually listed under? Oh, yeah. Go to the table of use regulations, page four of the zoning bylaw. You'll see on the chart there in the far right hand column is the business district, which allows for one single family dwelling within the business district. Yeah, but that's one dwelling. Also allows for two or more dwelling units, second floor and above when part of a mixed use building or development.
Building or development.
But doesn't say the density.
No, it doesn't say the density. And I, I think, as we talked about that years ago, when we were. You know, hammering on this by law and all the things that we thought about doing. But we didn't want to take major changes to it. Uh, the thought was. Is that the lots are so small in downtown that um that would. Development density would be predicated on the uh the septic ability. Of every site. Most of the sites are certainly small, but that was the discussion that we had. I guess that was uh five years ago.
Right, that's the, that's what allowed Willow Street to work. So why don't we just take it out? So we we still have the, you know, the discrepancy in R one A, we have up to. Six point three, you know, six point seven five units, and then it drops dramatically in R one B and. R A, which I think is a, is a problem of fairness and equity. In terms of treating zones differently. Because you're gonna get into the argument where you're dumping everything in the R one A and. And in fact, um, this doesn't really give developers an incentive to do anything but senior housing.
The written percentage terms, we're actually dumping everything in R A. That's a fourfold increase. That's a fourfold increase.
Per acre.
In then then in, there's a fourfold increase from the status quo density, whereas in. R one A, you're just going from two per acre to three. So you're not, you're not changing things as much in the R one A as you are in the R A.
You are already allowed more density in the R one A than anything else, than the, well, than the other two. Per acre. Base.
In other words, you're making the incremental change, you're, let's put it that way, you're making to R one A is. Is much smaller than it is to R A.
Right.
Yeah.
And what I worry about politically is that if you're starting to pass a by law. It makes a big incremental change, you're gonna get pushback.
Well, you get pushed back no matter what. Change always results in pushback.
Well, you, I I I'll make a comment because I I tend to agree with Bill. And the other thing is if we're, we're using the senior housing by law as a model. You can see i- in 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 the matrix that's used that in R one A. The base senior housing density is three, and then in R one B, it's two, and in R A, it's one.
Uh, that was my original proposal. Then Brian twisted my arm into going three, two, two. And now Rick wants to go three, three, three.
Well, then I'll make another comment too, because if if the purpose of this matrix is to. Um, submit it to developers for comment. Why don't we start with something conservative, i.e. Bill's proposal? And see what they say to that. If they come back and they like it. We win. If they come back and have other comments, then we can revisit it. But we might as well start, you know, modestly. Recognizing that there's likely to be pushback, but also being consistent with. The senior housing by law, which is working quite well.
I mean, though, if the purpose of this is to encourage development, and we're gonna put. Several caps on it, how far apart they have to be, how many total units we can add. Uh, how many units per this, per that, uh, why not just have equity across the town and let the other limiting factors? You know. Decision for the developer.
I'm not sure it's a question of equity, because I mean, this town has these zoning districts. And they've been established.
Historically for a reason.
Well, on the other hand, you're on the, the, the one, the version we have here. Uh, first, the first point is you wanted, you're trying to encourage development. If you put down one, 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 you're gonna discourage development, so.
Uh, we, nobody is in favor of that. Everybody was in favor. If if we did what was in the senior by law. It would be three, two, one. That's what the senior by law does. They give density bonus for meeting. The objectives that we have for providing senior housing.
Or a maximum of four units per acre.
Yeah. And the maximums we're, we're proposing over in G or, you know, they're gonna turn out to be pretty similar, so it's really just. Trying to provide similar incentives, which seemed to work at least for a while.
Yeah, but just.
General context.
Okay, well, I hear you and um, let me just sort of play devil's advocate here. It's gonna be a lot less from what I, what I, how I understand this is. Um, a lot easier and less costly for somebody to go to the senior housing by law than using this by law. Because if they want the open space, if they um want the additional. Units for uh, or uh, let's see, a column C. Um, that's pretty damn costly, so, you know, if that's a per acre fee. They're gonna go, well, gee, I don't have to pay that in the senior housing. I can just.
Yeah, but you have to restrict the units. You can't allow any kids. You have to restrict them to fifty five. There's only. So much of a market for that housing. I mean, you really are.
No, 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 Bill, Bill, that that argument, you tried to make that before. And then Larry Smith announced he was doing fifty more units of senior housing, so there's not a limited market. There's a very robust market. In Hamilton, so.
Let's ask him, let's ask him a year and a half from now, after he started to develop fifty units.
Let's deal with my point rather than trying to project in the future and and make statements that. Are not supported by the current facts that we see operational in this town. What I'm saying is, think of a developer. Actually, what we should do is, if we're gonna do this, we ought to. Have developers say, if you look at the current senior housing by law, and you look at. Post that we have in front of us, which would you prefer, and which does, you know. Then we'll have actually a good comparison in terms of what the market thinks is more profitable and valuable.
Well, that would be fine, so we, 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 let's, so we make it three, two, one, show it to a developer and say, look. In the flexible by law, what you're doing is you're basically buying extra density. With no requirement for it being for seniors. On the other hand, you can avoid that by making it just for seniors. So do you think that's a fair?
Well, that's what we're looking for. We want them to tell us.
We, when you think that's a fair exchange or or what? See what they say.
I I'm, I think that's fine, I, because that's what we're really trying to do, is get something that's actually workable. And that somebody will look at and say, yes, I think this is something I want to invest. Oh, I'm fine with um Bernie's suggestion. I think that's a good way to do this. If we um clean this up. Um, make the additions and additions that we've talked about. And then um do two or three examples so that um people reading it can see how it plays out. And then provide it to a developer, developers with Bill's version cleaned up. And the current senior housing by law and say, given these two. Where would you be investing your time and money?
Yeah, if he comes back and says fifty thousand dollars to develop, like, are you kidding me? I don't want to have anything to do with that. Uh, you know, then we'll know we need a lower fee and a bigger carrot or whatever.
Right. Does that make sense?
Okay.
I'd like to um get some clarification on some points. I I did look at the, I have the senior by law in front of me. And of course, uh, I think our recollections are are all kind of limited. I don't know how many people are over fifty, let alone over sixty, but anyhow, there there is no real cap in the senior. Housing by law, it, but it says up to and including fifty units. There's a a distance requirement of a third of a mile. If if the number of units exceeds fifty. Uh, it's uh two thirds of a mile, and then if it exceeds seventy five, it's a mile. I think the cap of fifty is a good one, and I think that we should go with a minimum of um a third of a mile, and I wouldn't even mind seeing it. Two thirds of a mile, point six six miles, particularly if they're fifty units. I mean, that, that's, that, that's a, uh, in my mind, uh, a big change in in the landscape. Unless the development were to be on some type of a pork chop type lot where you. Uh, similar to one thirty three Essex, where you're unlikely to really uh be able to see the magnitude of the the development. From the street.
Well, why don't we just, why don't we just start off with fifty and whatever mileage you want? Uh, you're gonna put that in the text, not in the matrix?
Yeah, I'll put that in the text. And then the other uh question is, do we want to actually? Limit the number of bedrooms? To two, since we're trying to encourage smaller uh uh smaller units with the. Incentive of uh less than, uh, is it less than fifteen hundred square feet or whatever it is? Do we want to limit the number of bedrooms? Yes or no?
No.
No, I don't think so.
Okay.
Oh, sorry, Cory.
I was just saying, we're only asking for fifty percent or so to be the fifteen hundred square feet. In that column, right?
Yes.
Yeah.
So if we limit it to two bedrooms, then we're gonna have a gigantic two bedroom. It'd be weird.
Six thousand square foot bedroom.
That's right, because uh my house is eighteen hundred and I've got four bedrooms. And a bath on the second floor.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, I, I mean, I think it'd be nice to encourage a mix.
Well, we've said in the text, I believe, and Marty, you can correct me, is that it includes townhouses, single family.
Multi. I also think, I also think through the water management requirements or suggestions that, I mean, bedrooms are all about septic in the end, right? So. I think things are gonna balance themselves out to probably four or fewer, given all of the different suggested measures.
Right. Well, yeah, I mean, we're trying to encourage different types of units. In a development or on different developments, and I think so. I think the more variety, the better, the more options, the better.
That was, that might have been, when I did the, my latest version, I tried to, uh, in footnotes. Indicate where the different provisions came from. And somewhere in one of the paragraphs that got into my draft, there was a reference to the number of bedrooms. So I will uh eliminate that and then add the cap as well as the distance. Requirement that we've discussed. So Bill, if you're. Finessing this matrix now, I can um try and, you know, have a really pretty. Clean. Version of the by law, the language portion of it. That could go to the developer as well, if that's helpful.
Yeah, let's, I mean, my plan, I'd like to finalize this. I think I said this last time, I'd like to finalize this at our next meeting. You know, in early January and get it out to developers right after that.
Okay, I'll, I'll try and. Because that's pretty clear what I'm gonna do here. I'll try and do it.
So.
Not.
Hey, Bill, can we?
Before the meeting.
And we just. I I, just for the purposes of um Mr. Slowski here. Um, I just want to go over what we, what we're going to add and change and delete. Oh, I'm just going from the top of my chart. So in column G, you're going to add total loud. Density per developed acre to that description.
Also in C.
Okay.
Yeah.
You're going to eliminate the a row, the business district in it.
Yep.
And in the following R one A, B and R A, you're gonna get rid of the max. Um, I'd suggest leaving per acre, just so that you know that. In the parentheses. But you can decide if you want that in or not.
I think that's important.
Put it in. Then, then I would go in column G for R one A, B and R A is, in column G is. Units, so you have three dash six point seven five units. Dash four point five units and so on, so that it's in clear. Does that make sense?
Okay.
Or you just changed the word density in the top to units.
Or put units and then parentheses density. Leave both words.
Whatever it needs to be clarified so that it's developable, yeah, per developed acre. Or units.
In the senior housing by law, it is, the, the, the caption is maximum density. Per developable acre.
Okay, good. So then on going down to the footnotes, um, number one. Again, I think it might make sense to add per acre or um it reflects. That per acre traditional unit.
Okay.
Uh, and then I just added six, seven and eight, and Bernie was referring to this. At six is um a limit of fifty per project. Seven is a maximum in total. Or maximum in total, I don't know how this housing by law works it in town. Number one hundred.
Hundred.
Uh, no more than a hundred total units developed in the town. In other words, they could be two fifty unit projects or twenty five unit projects. I'm just mirroring what the current senior housing by law has in terms of. People can change that if they want. Yes, no?
Well, that's, that's true. We had, we actually had to raise that cap, but we thought we should raise it because um.
That's fine.
Essex Street was.
You want to go to one?
It's just very close to the cap.
Want to go one fifty?
No, let's, let's, let's try and do exactly what we did with the senior and see what happens.
Okay, that's a hundred.
Yeah.
That's a hundred.
So it's a hundred max and fifty per project?
Yes, maximum per project is fifty, total prod, total units. Under the senior housing by law in the town is one hundred units. And number eight, I had, uh, God. I don't know what, I'm looking at my notes, doesn't make any sense.
Uh, the distance between projects?
Oh, yes, that, thank you. Same as the senior housing by law.
Well, we'll have to have, I think we'll have another footnote or two, which gives the examples.
Yep.
Remember, we wanted to exam, example, I think it's not really easy to do that in a row, we just give two examples.
Yeah, just do two examples, just so that. When they're reading it, then they can look at the example and go, okay, I get what you're talking about. I understand how this plays out.
Okay.
I'm fine with putting those things in the footnotes, but I'm gonna, I'm going to go and and review the senior housing by law again. And to the extent that what we're putting in the footnotes is part of the text, I will add it to the text too, because. As an attorney, I know that frequently footnotes aren't recognized for their importance all the time. People sometimes skip them and don't read them.
Skip the footnotes is what you're saying.
They sometimes don't focus on the footnotes.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So if it's something significant like the maximum.
It's in, it's in the text, they can't miss it.
It should be in the text. But I'll, I'll, I'll make it as consistent with the senior by law as I can.
Okay. Everybody has their marching orders.
So, so, Bill, um, I'm gonna make the same offer, so once you finish this. Um, send it to Demi the dimwit and um see if I.
At gmail dot com. Gmail dot com. Actually, what I'll do is I'll, since since four is the open meeting by law violation, I'll send it to both Marnie and you.
Okay.
And I'll be happy to send the revised bylaw itself, the the text of it, if you will, to anyone who would like to comment on it.
Editing, editing, by the way, is sent around, you can send around as much as you want. It's not a violation of open meeting law, as long as it sticks, sticks to editing of the actual document, not setting policy.
Okay, well, some of this is policy, but.
Well, you could be editing, editing the policy, but you're not debating the policy.
We're not adopting the policy.
Yeah, right.
We're not, we're not debating it in a private forum, we're just saying, here's.
Here's the tax.
Here's the matrix.
Here's the matrix, it's, you can send it to as many people as you want to, it's not a violation.
Okay. I think we're good. All right, moving on, review and discussion of possible zoning change for the winter school site. Can you kind of bring everybody up to date? Why we're thinking about this?
Um, well, this is a topic that's been dandied about, certainly in the planning board and Board of Selectmen for, oh, boy, I'm gonna guess say almost ten years. The Winter of School Site, just for people that don't have a lot of background, is owned by the town, and it's leased to the regional school district. And the town and Board of Selectmen and FinCom for a number of years has been talking about recapturing that land so that it becomes taxable again. And there's been discussion about then if it became part of the business district, then it could have more value in terms of the kinds of buildings and uses that are put on that site. And this has become more and more part of a discussion. And I talked to Sean Farrell, the chairman of Blackman. I said, is this something that we should put on the agenda to have a discussion and bring before town meeting? Said that he was very much in support of it, he'd been talking about this for years. So as I understand it, the lease for that property is up in two or three years. Concrete answer in terms of what the date is. But I think it's wise to start that discussion. We're probably, even if the school committee made a decision tomorrow that, yes, they want to close the Winthrop and any other schools and validate them in one elementary, a ten year planning and financing and structure to make that happen. But this is just laying the groundwork so that can happen. And I think also send a message to the committee that the town of Hamilton is serious about seeing that property change use at some point in the future. So. That's the general.
If if for some reason we're inundated by kiddies over the next five years. The, yeah, would they want to, what would this, would the school committee want that location? Would they propose, for example, to, I mean, I've just, I have no conversations with them. Would they propose to tear it down and build a new school there?
Well, I don't know. I think they own, and again, I I don't know this, I think they own the other two elementary schools, Butler and.
No, I think they own the high school.
You could.
In the middle school, but they don't own the two elementary schools.
Three elementary schools.
Any, they don't, I'm pretty sure, but check that, I don't think they own any elementary, but they own the high school and the middle school. But given, given back to your original discussion, Rick, all of having that property become available is predicated upon what Bill started to mention, which is essentially, does the school district want in need to give up that property as a school? And that's, that's the key to the discussion.
Well, the key to the discussion is, is the town wants that property back, and they want it taxable. And they are, want the schools to actually begin planning for the future because it's, given the school population of three hundred and one elementary students, that's probably changed, around three hundred. It makes no sense to have three elementary schools, that infrastructure, that's just ridiculous.
Okay, but that's, that's, that's a fine point.
No, it's a very big point.
Right, but no, let me finish. It begs the question of, what are you going to do and how much is it going to cost to house those three, the the Winthrop? So, yeah, the Winthrop portion in another building, where are you going to put them?
Well, there's. There's. Obviously, this discussion, as Rick said in the beginning, is predicated on, you know, the school system doing a new building.
That's correct.
Or however many at some point, which they've talked about, you know, over the years, consolidating. But I think Rick's just saying that this might be a, an initial sign or step that the town wants to take to signal, hey, you know, we can do other things with this property.
What are the things?
But obviously.
What are the things, what are the things would somebody do with that property?
What's that?
You could do, you could do a mixed use housing.
Oh, yeah, there next to the fire station, safety, huge, you know, cell tower there. How is that?
I'm sorry, what, you're breaking up?
Is that an attractive site for any kind of residential use?
Not with that building there.
Well, no, I mean, just it's right next to the fire station.
So.
And the train, I mean, it's, it's.
It's not going to be a.
Exactly, it's right, it's right near the train, it's walkable to the train, it's walkable to everything.
Yeah, no, I mean, it's a logic, it's a logical extension of the commercial district. You've got people on Maple Street, you've got people on Willow Street that live right next to the railroad tracks. You've got people behind the public safety building. There, you know, rose up in in great numbers about the fear of having any kind of affordable housing down there, so.
Well, that that was my thing, if you're not going to build affordable housing. And I'm not going to need to, because we have the Gordon Conwell thing going on, but in any case, what, what would you?
Next juice.
I don't think there's any market there for mixed use.
Bill, you're you're a track record on judging the market is not too good so far. We heard that argument with Willow Street. You told us that senior housing, there was no market for that. We've just got another fifty units on front of us, so that's an argument for ten years down the road. I think the Board of Selectmen would support this, I know the FinCom would support this, I think it's smart thing to do. You don't have to do it right now, but I'd like to at least begin to have that.
All, all it's doing, all it's doing is just giving more flexibility to what can go there.
Yeah.
That's all it is.
One step.
I mean, I'm not opposed to it, I'm I'm just a little skeptical about it being some great money pit.
Well, I don't know if anybody's saying that necessarily, but I think they, it it could, I'm not saying it will be, it could be more valuable than just his residential lots, I don't know. I mean, maybe, maybe right now, that's not the case, but five years, ten years from now, which, again, that's the timeframe we're talking about here at a minimum for it to have any change of use. What's there now, who knows? Right, but opening it, opening it up to more options and more flexibility is all that we're talking about here.
And the the likelihood or the the potential of rezoning for business for that property would still allow schools to continue to be there so long as there was a need to do so.
Right.
So it's really a paper change when you think about it.
And it's one last step to go through if the opportunity does come up to need it for something else.
Right.
Use it for something else.
Right, and and then it allows at some point the HTC to become involved in in that site at some point in the future, if the HTC still exists and no potentially help kind of investment occur on that site. But that's, you know, that's, we're going to be long gone. When that, when that actually happens, this is just setting the table for potential alternate use.
You, you mean, Rick, you're not planning on living to your a hundred?
God, God help us if I am.
I say it's fine with me if you want to live to a hundred.
No, thank you.
Okay.
It's not about wanting to.
Yeah, I don't have a choice in this matter.
Yeah, but you could go for it.
Anyway.
Never mind.
Anyway, so that that's the, that's the background to the discussion, and I'm just want to, Bill, your, your point is is fine. It's, this is why we're having this discussion, what would go there, we don't know. So just it's starting to have this discussion and see if we can make it a more serious discussion.
Actually zone now.
Residential.
Well, which residential?
One A.
One A. So is this something that we think we'd want to do this spring? Propose anyway?
Yeah, there's, there's no rush on this, but I I think it's something we'd like to discuss and decide, do we want to do it and then?
Does this have to go to town meeting?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, that's what you meant by spring.
Two thirds.
I could see the residential developments to the east, the Long Bay Road, objecting to this quite a lot.
Oh, sure.
I mean, it's nice to have a little neighborhood school next to you as opposed to some mixed use development, whatever, whatever would go.
Well, on the other hand, if if we ever do do something, you got to take the first step, so we might as well take the first step and get out of the way.
Yeah, I mean, it's, it's, it's actually, I think it's a good time, because it's so far, the reality of something actually happening in there is paid or more away. So it's not like, wow, they're tearing down the school and they want to change it to a commercial district, wow, that's a big change, we better oppose this. It's like, this is adding a potential future use. I mean, people object to any change, Bill, so if we use that as a measure of whether we do something or not, we'd never make any, we'd never do not anything.
There would be no need for this board.
I, let me get a few words in, I I do think that there are some complexities that we would need to deal with. You know, how much of the area between this property and say the shopping center should we be including? There's a neighborhood there, there's the public safety building, there's a council on aging, that's a historic building. There's some, some things that we would need to talk through to get to that actual area that we would want to create as the new district. I tend to like to make districts contiguous. So when you have, you know, two zoning pockets of business that are separated by something, you're creating issues in that land use between the two, so I think that, you know, we need to talk through those kinds of things. And and I think it's important to have some of the the property owners' representatives as part of that too.
Patrick, how far is the school building land from a business district zoning? I mean, you got.
Probably like twenty feet.
Pardon?
I can't be far, right, there's the.
Well, you've got the, what's it called, Carriage Street?
Carriage Lane.
Yeah, Carriage Lane with residential lots on both sides. Plus the public safety building as well as the council on aging or residential as well.
Okay, but what about across the street?
That ends in Asbury Street.
Entirely residential.
No, well, and it has, it stops at the corner of Asbury and one A, the the business district on on the west side.
So the park is entirely residential, Richard.
The park is, yeah.
Yeah, but the port part where Hansbury's was and and what about the?
Community House and everything is in the business district.
Okay.
Yeah.
So I, probably the next step would be is to, maybe it's, Patrick, you and I working on drawing up a map, a post map to and just that, and then bring that over the board and say, here's the visual representation of what we're thinking about, so we act what it include.
So Patrick, all those, all those little houses that have been converted into businesses between Cumberland Farms and
Public Safety.
And the public use buildings, those are all, that's still a residential zone.
Yes, sir. Not all of them, no. I don't think it's all of them.
You're in one of them.
Residential zone.
There's one or two, like after locksmiths or maybe the next building north, I think, then then there's another house that's residentially zone, but the ones before that, I think are in the business.
They were all. We'll make sure.
Yeah.
Well, locksmith, the guy that owns locksmith owns, when you're facing it, owns the building to the left.
Yep.
Also.
Yep.
Is that a business, is that a business zone building also?
I believe it is.
It is?
I think so.
I think, yeah, because there's, there are businesses in there, aren't there? There's a couple of offices in that building, right?
I think so.
Yeah.
So we should do a map, and then we can map out what it is existing, and then what is we might propose. So this probably wouldn't be ready for the spring town meeting, because it's going to take some time to do that, and then we've got the flexible development by law we're working on. Not a, you know, it's a nice to do, not a need to do, so maybe all.
Yeah.
We know how many acres. I'm sorry, Cory, what were you saying?
I'm sorry, I didn't mean to interrupt, but I just wondered if we knew how many acres the the site was that we're talking about.
The Winthrop.
Yeah, so like about thirty or so.
It's not, no, I think it's about twelve.
Okay.
And I'm looking at the GIS map right now. And the the two properties, the two properties north of Cumberland Farms are in the business district, and the rest on that side are residential.
Yeah, the Winthrop School property itself is eleven point nine seven.
Yep.
That's a fairly, fairly substantial piece of property in the immediate vicinity of the downtown.
Right.
Yeah, so you'd be zoning seven single families in that business district if you did it. Which, again, it doesn't really affect them that much. It's just like my street, my street is all business district too, and there's, you know, eight houses.
You live on Willow Street, right?
Yes, by Willow and Cummings, and all of Cummings is 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 houses, but it's all business district.
Yeah.
The only thing is, if you're trying to keep a neighborhood, that arrangement allows businesses to basically come in and take over from those small, single family house and open up whatever kind of shop they're going to do.
Yeah, but let's say like my street, right? The two houses, mine on Willow and my neighbor's on Willow, you know, have never been businesses. And the houses behind have not either, right, you're not gonna and same with Carriage Lane, right, like you're not going to put a business down Carriage Lane, there's no visibility. I just don't, I just don't see that happening.
Unless it was an office building of some kind.
Yeah, I mean, the only, the only way it would happen, right, is if, I think we talked about this years ago, with my street was, you know, is somebody going to buy up all those eight lots, knock them down and build something like, you know, Willow Dale or something? But, you know, not in this market, probably, and probably not ever here, in our town, anyway.
Yeah, it'd be too expensive.
Right.
They're worth more as houses now than they would be.
That's right.
Potentially to any business.
That's right.
Yeah, definitely looking at the state of our commercial businesses right now, they he gone and half of the Crosby's section there gone.
Right, and even, you know, pre-pandemic, it wasn't, you know, I mean, things were not 100% full by any means, so it wasn't as bad as it is now, but yeah, I guess, I guess don't see, you know, massive commercial coming in there and taking over those houses. Okay, so we'll continue to talk about that a bit and maybe get the map worked up for next time, just to see what we're talking about and go from there. All right, we have two sets of minutes to approve from November 17th and December 1st. Any comments on the 17th? First?
Nope.
No.
Wait a minute, Marnie hasn't spoken yet.
I, I just had one question.
I just.
Marnie, we're depending on you to keep us honest.
I know, I'm keeping you honest, so there's a sentence that says Larry Smith noted that the payment of about $1 million for affordable housing payments, which was three times the 77,000 AMI for Hamilton. 77,000 times three is not a million, so I don't know what happened there.
Yeah, that, that, that doesn't make any sense.
It's not, it's just, it's just a math thing and, and I don't know how it came about, but.
And you cross that out so that it, you know, you did say a million dollars or the Affordable Housing Trust, I don't remember anything about you know, 77.
Change it to say Larry Smith noted there would be a payment of about a million dollars to, for the Affordable Housing Trust.
Right. Here. Yeah, that, that sounds, that sounds good.
Yeah, because AMI and the per unit price he would need to pay, there are different things.
Yeah, so it was, it just struck me, you know, I'm not a mathematician, but I, I can.
Oh, thank you.
You, you can make sure two plus, plus two equals four.
So other than that, I, I thought they were fine.
Okay, anything?
Yeah, I was just, I was just going to make a motion to adopt the meeting minutes of Marnie fill in the dates.
Well, November, this, wait, do you have any comments on December 1st, Marnie?
Unfortunately, my comments with respect to December 1st could, could I have a lot of problems with them.
Okay.
So I, I, I probably, you know, should talk to Patrick or I don't know how to handle it, but I, I did have quite a number of edits to, to those minutes. So I, I don't know how you all would like to handle that and, you know, although most were stylistic, some were clarifications and, you know, the language, I just didn't know what, I just had, had a few problems, so. And then there were some consistency issues, so Anne, I'm happy to, I'm happy to work with anyone to kind of resolve that.
Okay. You, Anne, and I will take care of that in the next few days. We'll need to work within schedule, but think in terms of, I assume that you have some specific comments, so if you could maybe redline those for us and we could take a.
Is this a Word document?
Is it, Anne?
Yeah, she's, yeah, she nodded, yes.
Oh, if it's a Word document, I could, I could redline it and, and, you know, make my suggestions.
Okay. All right, that'd be great, thank you.
And, and please don't take it personally, I've, you know, I've.
Tell all learn.
I mean.
What kind of lawyer are you, Marnie?
I was a bankruptcy attorney, but I actually worked for the federal bankruptcy court and spent a good part of my career drafting decisions for a bankruptcy judge, so.
Details, details, details.
Yeah, there, there isn't a set of minutes you haven't edited, so I think but no offense should be taken.
Please don't take any offense. And this is your first foray into this, isn't it?
Yes, it is.
Okay, so.
So.
We're gonna resolve.
Okay, Rick.
So.
We're having a storm, so I can work on it.
Rick, Rick, you, you making a motion?
I am, I need a date, though.
17th, November 17th.
17.
Of December. Of November, okay. I make a motion to approve the minutes as amended by Marnie Crouch for November 17th, 2020.
I second the motion.
Second. Marnie's seconds, is there any more discussion? Okay, roll call vote on approval of November 17th minutes, Marnie.
Marnie Crouch, I.
Corey.
Corey, I.
Rick.
Rick Mitchell, I.
Richard.
Richard Boroff, I.
Bill.
Bill Wheaton, I.
And Brian Stein is an I, so it's unanimous. Thank you. Patrick, any other updates?
Uh, let's see, I sent out to members a 2021 Town of Hamilton Planning Board Meeting Schedule. Take a look at that, members, if you haven't already. This is what we'd like to shoot for, again, these are the first and third Tuesdays of every month.
Yep.
Another thing that I've been working on, I've been project managing the consultant team that has been doing the parking study for downtown. They have done an inventory, they're finishing up the utilization evaluation of downtown relative to parking. We've had a couple of meetings now, we'll have another one probably in early January. But happy if folks on the planning board wanted to be part of that.
Okay. Can we go back to the schedule real quick?
Sure.
Have you, did we go through, did you go through and just check with holidays or elections or anything like that?
Yeah, I did check on holidays, I also checked that we would not be having elections on November the 2nd.
Yep, okay, okay.
What about town elections during the spring or summer?
They did not conflict with our dates.
Thank you.
Okay, anything else from anyone? All right.
I, I just have a, just a quick update, so on the Willow Street project, we're scheduled to close on January 15th on that. And Marnie, I wanted to just, this is across HTC to the Affordable Housing Trust. Marnie, I, I think there were some documents that you and Patrick were working on to just amend the language dates in terms of the, the $500,000.
Right, and actually, we're having a meeting tomorrow evening at 6:00 PM to review that language, Dave Tagore did provide us with a red line to our commitment letter, so we'll consider his proposed changes. I don't perceive any problems with what he is suggesting, so we'll probably go forward with that, I don't anticipate any opposition whatsoever, but it, it had to be done through a formal meeting, so I think that that's really going well.
Great, great.
Are there any updates on Gordon Conwell, Patrick? They are moving slowly. The Gordon Conwell Task Force has put together a, an agenda for our next meeting and they're going to be trying to get Sunquist and Jay Treeworm at the meeting, I believe. So we're going to try to get some real live responses from them.
Yeah, we're looking for a meeting in January.
Your fifth. Okay, that'll be interesting.
Good to get some progress on that.
Yeah.
Yeah, you would think, given their financial situations, they'd be moving a little bit more explicitly.
I noticed that their number two was amongst our attendees earlier this evening when the A and R was being reviewed.
They're just doing regular single family housing on that, as far as you can see, Patrick?
Yeah, as far as I know.
The housing they built across the street, little, those three units with the Ford Brothers built sell like hotcakes every, every, every time, so.
Yeah.
Yeah. Okay, are we good, anything else?
And our next meeting is?
Next meeting is January the 5th.
Okay, so we'll see all of you next year.
Yep, have a good holiday, everybody.
Yeah, likewise.
But we have to.
Motion to adjourn?
Yes.
I make one.
You should.
Make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
Rick's seconds, Bill made the motion. Okay, all those in favor, Marnie?
Marnie Crouch, I.
Rick.
Rick Mitchell, I.
Bill.
Bill Wheaton, I.
Richard.
Richard Boroff, I.
Corey.
Corey, I.
Brian Stein is an I as well. All right, thank you, Patrick, thank you, Anne, thank you, everyone.
Merry Christmas.
Good night, everybody.
Yeah, have a great year.
Yeah.
Bye, bro.
Bye bye.
Bye bye.